Good evening and welcome to the Village of Tocco Planning Board Meeting. Nancy, will you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Maronberg.
Present.
Commissioner Barra.
Present.
Commissioner Caliano.
Here.
Commissioner Gorman.
Present.
Chairman Caramello.
Present. We have on our agenda this, first of all, I'd like to have an approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? So, okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm not staying, I wasn't here.
We also have our agenda, which consists of three, two items. We have an, first, I'll tell you, the 109 Marbledale Road, which is the hotel, is adjourned. Also, 10 Fisher Avenue, which is the garage storage, is adjourned. And 229 Alpine Place, converting to two-family, is also adjourned. On our agenda for this evening, we have 2 Depot Square, which is to expand a work area for dog grooming, and 100 Main Street, site plan review.
Madam Chair, if I could just interject for one sec on the hotel. Just wanted to bring you up to speed on what's happened. On Friday, DEC issued a fact sheet. So basically, what they've done is they've started the comment period, the public comment period, this is what we were waiting on, it's a 45-day comment period. That comment period started March 11th, 2016, and is going to go through April 24th, 2016, okay? The fact sheet that I'm referring to can be found on the Village of Tocco's website. If you go on the website, you have to go into a tab called Special Topics. There is the Proposed Hotel and Restaurant under the Special Topics, and then there'll be a Remedy Proposal, and that's what you have to click on. And that fact sheet basically goes through and tells you how to make the public comments, who to make them to, where to make them to. Also, this fact sheet also set up a public hearing, a public meeting, on April 14th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, and that meeting's going to happen here. It's going to be run by the DEC, but the meeting will take place here, and it will be televised. It also gives the public to come down, question the DEC, they're going to go through everything. But that said, I just wanted to let the board know what happened on Friday with that.
Okay. And these meetings will all be publicized by the DEC?
Publicized by the DEC, but they're going to be put on our website. I'm telling you guys now, I know that the village is doing everything they can to say, hey, this meeting's going to happen, but the DEC will notice it themselves also.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will start with 20 Depot Square. Expanding the area for dog grooming, site plan approval.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm not quite sure what it is that you...
Please, identify yourselves.
Okay. I'm Anthony Maglino. I am the owner of the animal hospital, Mike Kennedy.
And Michael Kennedy. I am President Kennedy Canine Center, Inc., which is a separate business inside the animal hospital.
Okay.
So what we're looking to do, we've expanded over, I've been in the locale for over 18 years, and we've expanded into the basement over time. And what we're looking to do is designate an area, I believe about 150 square feet of the basement, to the Kennedy Canine Center grooming facility.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess we're here for that approval tonight.
Okay. And will you explain what it is, and what the size of the area is, what else is there and so on specifically?
The area that I would be using is the basement area. I have a tub area, a bank of cages, and two tables, so it's total of 150 square feet, but it's more like 90 square feet of space that I'm using. We do grooming for the animal hospital clients. There's no separate entrance, it's a common area for the animal hospital. The animal hospital uses the remainder of the basement for various tasks related to the animal hospital, so I use one small area just for grooming animals who are clients of the animal hospital. They're registered through the animal hospital first, they're checked in, and then brought down to me either after their exam, or whatever they need done regarding the animal hospital, relating to the animal hospital.
And the number of people who will be working in this?
It would be myself and one part-time employee. I also do dog training, which is outside of the animal hospital, so I'm in and out during the day, so I have one part-time employee that covers the grooming when I'm not there.
Okay. And what about parking?
Parking? The animal hospital has five designated spots currently, and they, as, right now, there's one spot that's always open today, there were two spots that are open. As far as myself and my employee, I live at 38 New Street in East Chester, which is less than a quarter mile away. I walk to work, and my employee doesn't drive at all, she gets dropped off by her husband. So we don't, neither of us have vehicles involved in the parking for the animal hospital.
Okay. Are there any other details that you would like to share with us?
I'm not sure regarding what or what information. I'd be glad to share whatever it is you're looking for.
See if anyone has any questions. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah. I do. Do you, I guess I would ask of the doctor, do you currently offer a grooming service? And you just happen to be deciding to situate it in your basement area?
No. Well, what it is, is that we've always had a need for medical grooming, and it's just expanded into outside of the medical needs of skincare and coat conditioning. The requests have grown into, hey, I just want fluffy haircut and this and that, and so Mike's been with us for a while, and so now we just have to get, I guess, formal approval for the use of his services as his own entity, not part of just doing medical bathing and grooming for the hospital.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, are you currently providing that service to the veterinary hospital?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
And where are you located when you're providing that service?
In the basement of 20 Depot Square, which is the animal hospital.
So you're actually using it already?
Correct.
But you're saying that you were limited to work that is related to your medical practice?
Correct. We were doing medicated baths, we were doing medicated baths for the animal hospital, and strip job, stripped down, shaved down for skin conditions, and shaving cats that needed, or cats or dogs that needed. Now we're expanding, we want to expand to cover all grooming services.
Okay.
Do you need a certificate, Mr. Kennedy, to do any of that?
I have a certificate for grooming, but it's not required by law.
And what about your assistants?
My part-time employee is a licensed beautician, and also a certified dog groomer.
Okay. And that's certified with the state or the county, or what?
It's with, I believe her certification is New York State, mine is also New York State.
Okay. What were the hours that you expected to offer this service?
From 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
How many days a week?
Monday through Friday, and Saturdays, it would be 8 to 4.
Are you going to solicit additional clients for purposes of just grooming? Or is it going to be basically patients, shall we say, pet patients that are channeled or funneled to the grooming portion that you expect to...
There are enough clients within the animal hospital client base to more than satisfy my needs.
Okay. And is there going to be, I know we don't do signage, but maybe we should ask about signage, just to find out if there's going to be signage, or a need for signage?
No. My referrals are all through the animal hospital. I have no need to post advertising or signs.
On the building?
On the building.
Okay. There, do we, I'm wondering about restroom facilities. I'm assuming they're adequate at the moment, correct?
Correct.
And so, nothing additional needs to...
Since he's tying it into the upstairs. Since he's tying it into the upstairs, the doctor has adequate.
And I'm assuming washing and bathing, I guess, a sink, some kind of sink, or...
Well, when we get the set of drawings, I believe we have the set of drawings for the construction, the as-built of it, we'll take a look at that and make sure that it meets the codes.
Okay.
But this is a, basically, this is kind of like a legalization, so...
Of a current use?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the only thing that triggered him was that we have, it's two independent uses, so we had to send them to you guys to make sure that you're aware that it's two uses. They coincide, but in theory, they're two separate companies. He's working under his umbrella.
Right.
So the groomer's his own entity.
Interesting concept. Who pays who here? Who signs your check, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, my client signed most of my checks. The rent or payment is based on a percentage of the dogs that I groom through the animal hospital.
So you pay rent to the doctor?
A percentage of what I make, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay. Do we have a, oh, first, do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make comment? There being no one who wishes to make comment, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good luck.
Oh, no, we have to take the vote.
We need to take a vote.
No, we have to take the vote.
Oh, sorry. I am sorry.
Not yet. Not yet.
Yes. Would you read the resolution, please?
Okay. SECR resolution. Pursuant to the regulations of SECR, this board finds that the action taken herein in the unlisted actions subject to the requirements of SECR and its implementing regulations, this board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. That action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Okay?
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now.
Okay.
Another project.
So...
Another project.
Yes, of course.
Okay. The following is a resolution decision of the Planning Architectural Review Board of the Village of Tocco, New York. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with the board's review process pursuant to 7-1 of the Village of Tocco zoning code. The application of Tocco Animal Hospital and Kennedy Canine Center are therefore approved with the following conditions. One, the basement shall, the basement space shall be shared by the Tocco Animal Hospital and Kennedy Canine Center as per the ratio set forth in the plan submitted by the applicant dated February 23rd, 2016. There shall be a minimum of five parking spaces maintained by the Tocco Animal Hospital and the Kennedy Canine Center. Said spaces shall be shared by the two entities as the applicants deemed appropriate. Number three, every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from this representations made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. Okay?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, or discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Second item on our agenda is 100 Main Street, 4 Site Plan... I can put that away. Natural Review and Approval. Not sure which, is it the old one, I guess, or this one? Don't forget to give it to...
Good evening, chairperson, chairman, members of the board. My name is Les Marin, Marin Amizante, 5 West Chester Avenue, Pound Ridge, New York. For the applicant, for the 100 Main Street project. This evening, I also have Mr. Murray from the applicant, he's here, as well as Joe and Chris Croco, the architects. This project had been at the zoning board of the village, and last June, we received a side yard variance for a three-foot variance, because the code allows either a no setback or a six-foot setback, and we have a three-foot setback. That setback was also, it had been requested by this board during a previous iteration of this project a couple of years ago. So we kept, to be consistent, we kept that, and we went back to the zoning board for that same three-foot variance along Terrace Place. The zoning board also granted a variance to allow four stories, where that zone allows three stories, however, that the fourth floor is not a full-fourth floor, it's setback from the road, as you'll see from the plans. They also permitted a variance for 37 parking spaces, including eight tandem spaces, which are going to be 9 by 15, so slightly smaller in size, and they will be permanently assigned to some of the larger units. There will be 19, according to the zoning variance that was granted, there will be a maximum of 19 units, not more than 37 bedrooms, and it's broken out into two four-bedroom units, six three-bedroom units, four two-bedroom units, and seven one-bedroom units. There's also 2,642 square feet of retail space on the ground floor of the building, which can be not more than two units. The project had been, had received site plan approval by this board a couple of years ago. We then ran into some difficulties with architectural review, so the owner was prevailed upon to go back to the drawing boards with his design. He had hired a new architect. We came in, we met informally with this board in January and in February, to get a sense of the board that we were on the right track, and we did understand that we were on the right track. We then filed the formal application. We met with you at your work session in March. There were some recommended design changes by the board, which we have made and are reflected, were reflected in the revised plans in March. There were also some changes in some roof lines and some other aspects of the building. At that meeting, the, some of the village's consultants, Mr. Pinto and BFG, Frank Fisher's office, had raised some issues and made some changes also. I believe Mr. Croco will get to those. I believe if those have not already been addressed by either Mr. Croco's office or by the broker engineering, they will be addressed prior to our next meeting with you, because we, prior to our next meeting with you. We would, we met at your work session, as I said, the consultants raised some issues, we dealt with those. So without further holding you up, Joe Croco or Chris, whichever one he wants to do it, can quickly run through the design of the building. We also do have some samples, which we did not have at your last work session, we have some samples of some material. They're currently on boards that have other samples, too, and for the next meeting, we'll have them broken out into larger samples, so you can see the colors and indications where on the building the different materials are going to be. Gentlemen.
Did you get, did you get the dog?
Yes, we got it. We didn't get it.
Oh, right. Yeah. Or you could take the mic and, one, two, yeah. Do you have, are you going to refer to this now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you have a pick, one of these that you can put on the easel?
You can use this one.
Yes, but we kind of deviated from the colors that we've been seeing, because we wanted to change.
Oh, boy.
All right. I know these are different than what we've been seeing color-wise, but you guys said you wanted to see something that was, really made it pop, so we kind of deviated from where we were, and kind of went a different route. This is going to be the stucco color, anywhere you see stucco. So anywhere in the peaks, we're going to go with this as a stucco color. I don't know if you guys want to pass it around, it's a little wet still. We're going to use a thin, we're going to use a thin brick, it's going to be colored ruby red. We'll use that for anywhere you see brick, herringbone, soldering...
Which one is it there?
It's this one. Dad, hold that for us?
Yeah, yeah.
What?
It's this one.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could you go to the easel and point these things out as well?
Sure.
If you speak and you do the pointing, maybe that would be...
Okay.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got a point, or you got a point?
And also the, the stucco.
Yeah, I mean, you could throw, we could put this up instead. I don't know if, oh, there's no way to really clip it. It's just got to kind of stay.
Architects don't kind of fix. Okay. He had it in pretty well. There it is.
There it is.
It's in pretty...
There it is. Would you like me to start over, or, would you like me to start over, or keep going?
Just point out, because they hear, folks at home heard what you said.
Okay.
But you can just point out, at the easel...
So the camera can pick it up?
The camera can pick it up, and then you point to the places on the building where you would be using that material.
So anywhere we see this red brick, here, 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 and here, we're going to be using color ruby red.
The easel would point to it.
We're going to be using color ruby red. It'll be this one. I don't know if he picks that up.
I don't think it's coming up.
Put your finger down further, so that it goes toward the ruby red words.
Yeah, tough. There we go.
That one, okay.
There you go.
Ruby red. So anywhere you see brick on this rendering, it'll be ruby red. It's a thin brick. Anywhere you see stucco, so in anywhere, any, anywhere there are peaks that are stucco, it'll be this color.
It's more beige than it appears on the screen, correct?
Yeah, it seems very dark.
Yeah.
It's white on the screen.
I mean, you really don't see it accurately, but you can't...
Everything kind of deviates, colors, light, TV.
All right. Next, next...
And then?
The stone. I don't know, that one's awful red.
You might have to just come and hold it, so it doesn't break.
Well, I'm also looking at this, and I'm looking at this.
Okay. So we have stone in a few areas. There's stone here, there's stone all along the bottom, and there's stone here. We plan to use this, this color particularly, in an ashlar pattern, so it'll be a bigger, it'll be bigger blocks, it'll be a lot bigger, they'll be more fuller. So we'll be using this color, anywhere you see stone peaks, it'll be this color. Other than that, with the window frames, we change, we plan to do the window frames, because the residential windows will be Anderson's. We plan to match the storefront in forest green. So, all window frames and storefront glass, storefront frames will be forest green. And then the roof, all the way around, anywhere you see roofs, we're going to be using a pewter gr, it's this one.
Okay. You know, when you're done with showing on the camera, you need to show us, because we're not seeing those colors.
Okay. Not a problem. Not a problem. Okay. So...
Which one was it?
There we go.
So which?
Sorry.
Which is the roof color?
The roof is this. This is pewter gray. So it'll be this color. It'll be darker.
Just tip it up.
Sure.
So we can, okay.
I need to look at the rest of it, but I'll wait till we're done with the camera.
The stucco, as you can see, is...
Very white.
Very white.
This is the molyne for the windows, right?
Molyne for the windows is going to be the forest green.
The windows are just the ground floor retail?
All the windows.
All the frames.
So all the frames for the residential, and all the frames for the storefront.
Yeah, upstairs will be Anderson, downstairs, there'll be...
There'll be custom storefront. And then we plan to use the ruby red brick everywhere.
Where's, I need to see the stone. There's a lot of colors going on here.
Is it at all possible, when you come next time, to have...
We'll put it all on one board.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it was just...
Because it's very difficult to get an idea of how they blend or don't blend, or whatever.
The rendering is redone, with the right colors, and we'll mass a single board, we'll have it.
Yes.
In the two weeks, we just pulled it all together.
You can bring these as well, but you have something that is...
Yeah, no, some, I mean, the stone will be tough to mount, but...
And you singled out a certain brick, the one...
Ruby red.
No, the stone.
The stone.
Oh, yes. It's this particular color. We're going to have them all done in this particular color, in an ashlar pattern, so it'll be bigger, bigger blocks.
There won't be any contrast with this. This is too light, that's too close to this, that should be a little darker, and the green should be not a green, a black, a charcoal gray, a dark brown, no. No, at least that's my, my opinion on the colors and the...
I don't have a problem with the green, because it's a dark green. I do have a problem, I think this is a little too light.
You think this is too light?
To go with the ruby red brick?
Go with the ruby red.
Such a contrast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a big contrast, if you put them together.
This we can darken.
I mean, that's why, I don't know what everyone else is thinking. I agree with you.
No, it's a little too, that's a little too dark. I mean, something between this and that.
Okay, so...
You need, I mean, the point of the stone is to set off, set it off, and make it stand out, and when you make it the same color, or nearly the same as this...
Right.
You've defeated that purpose. So, that's why...
Because it is your focal point.
That's why I say, the stone should be a darker, at least distinguish it from this by at least two shades, and frankly, despite my colleagues, I'm not in favor of the color.
The e, the stuff that they want to...
I don't know how everyone else feels about the green.
Also, you know, the stone is going to be all the same color?
Well, there'll be some range, and it's just that way.
Because here, you have...
But you're not, I understand what your chair is saying, you're not offering that range on that model. Is that correct? You are not offering that range?
No, we're not going with this whole range. We're trying to stay closer to this color.
Is it possible to bring in a, one of those...
A palette like that?
With just the color you're using?
Yes.
The sizes of the stones you're, well, not exactly, but...
Well, the sizes of the stones, we're trying to go with a bigger one. I mean, we could bring you one, maybe. One of the size, and then we could bring you the...
Yeah, just something to, so we can see it, how it would actually look.
The same size?
Without the others.
I, you know what, we'll work on this. I think we're going to probably go through two sessions on these, as we refine them.
Well, we just wanted to get the board's feeling, and I think we're going in the right direction. We'll refine our presentation now that we have further direction.
No, but I also think, if you have large pieces, and they're all the same color...
Yeah, we can, we can contact the manufacturer now and get the samples of what was selected. In the two weeks, we...
I'm talking about the stone, too.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And then may, you know, on the molyne, maybe, you know, maybe two options, the green and your second choice.
Okay.
Was there a preference beyond green?
I'll tell you why the green, normally, I like that green, but I'll tell you why, for me, anyway. I'm not seeing green here, because it, it, it's, it doesn't comp, I mean... I'm not seeing green here because it, it, it's, it doesn't comp, I mean, it, it's a real contrast to everything else that's going on. And I'm not sure we want to contrast what's essentially a functional element rather than a decorative element that much. I, that's my thought about why that should be a more neutral or blending in kind of color. So that you sort of don't notice the window frame. That's my thought on that. I happen to think, I don't know how much you're going to see the green, frankly, but it almost looks a little, you know, Christmas tree like. You got a lot going on there.
I was going to say something like that. I, I'm more concerned about the red, how it lines up with the red. That's the only.
Are you okay with the brick color?
Yeah.
I like the brick.
You like the brick?
What are your, what are your thoughts?
I just, I agree with you on the green. I think with the red, it might, this and that one element, it might.
It highlights it in a way that I'm not sure it necessarily needs to, excuse me, be highlighted. Like I said, it's not ornamental, it's functional.
And I, and I think one of our, at the work session, one of our issues though was, and maybe it's not green, but maybe another, something else. We thought it was a little too bland here. So we were looking for something to pop. So one of the suggestions was.
Was the frame?
I think it looks great.
Changed the frame.
I think what you've done with the colors.
Yeah.
As we discussed, I think it looks good.
Yeah, um.
Give us a preference on the molyum color so the client will have a clear understanding.
Is green out for you guys? Is that what the consensus is?
Dominantly, yeah.
Are, are these our choices?
You have no problem with green?
Are these our choices?
You don't love green.
I, I, I love, I'm just concerned with the red. Are you, what do you guys think of the contrast with the red?
Okay.
It's the only concern I have. These are the Anderson colors and that's the window frame.
We're trying to stick with stock colors. And we can have the storefront made in any of these colors. But the majority of our windows are going to be Anderson, so it makes sense.
Right, right, right.
Cost wise, it works if we stay within.
So one of those choices.
You know, what would make it pop, what's the color in the lower left?
This one?
No.
No, down.
Bronze.
Dark bronze.
Let me see that.
Sure.
It's a brown, so it is a brown.
This one, you're talking about that one?
Yeah, my thoughts would be in that direction. Because you still get the highlighting of the frame, but it's a little more sympathetic with the colors you've got going on rather than contrasting. It was, or even, even the ones above, either one above, I would, I could, I could stand. I wouldn't be thrilled, but I could stand it.
Would this similar to that color on the trim work?
No, that's on the peaks.
We could match, we could match.
The top, it's a top.
The peak colors.
We could match those. We could carry that, carry that in the trim work here, that same color if you did the bronze.
Yeah, you could. That was my next question. What's your, what is your timbering supposed to look like? What colors on it?
We'll make it match the storefront.
Storefront and the windows, all the windows?
Yeah, storefront and the windows, we want to do all one color.
Yeah, because that'll isolate it as a feature, but it won't, it won't compete with it. No, the bronze.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
And I thought the red was a little too bright, but I'm okay with it if you darken this up.
Bring this up. And bring that up.
If that changes, that'll make a difference.
Also bring the stone up relative to the.
Go to something like this with the stucco.
I tend not to like yellow. I, I go for the topies. Like, just bring this up two shades and then I guess comparably bring up the stone a shade, a couple of shades.
I'm not crazy about that one in the.
I am.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about that one right there though, in the corner that you were just pointing.
Well, I mean, this was just a brick color. We were just trying to get a gauge on what you wanted for that.
And the roof is a good, I think it's a good contrast.
Yeah, the roof is fine.
Roof, all right, so you're okay with the roof, you're okay with the ruby red?
Uh huh.
The size of, if you could show us what size you're talking about with the stone. You know, if you look at the piece of the building that's across the street, they, they kind of. By mixing it, you don't make it as, you know, institutional looking with these big blocks of stone.
Yeah, which is why the variation in color and shading on the stone will create some contrast to make it come out in a pleasing way.
You said not to start though.
Yeah, just warming this up a bit, you know, would do it.
Maybe somewhere between this, right, and that?
Yeah.
But tend toward the browns and grays rather.
Not the yellows.
Rather than the yellows. Avoid the yellows.
So we can get a full size shingle, we'll, we'll.
We'll get a brick. We just wanted to get your feeling on which direction we were going before we went.
Well, that's, that's it for now.
Right.
We need to see it.
And you'll bring a selection of colors of the stone.
We'll bring them, yes.
We're going to look at this, I mean, this is.
Some comments from consultants, I don't know if you want to go through or have us work with them to solve. Those issues or do you want to discuss them now? These are from Frank DiMarco.
Frank and Fish and, and Dolphy just got.
Dolphy just got.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay, so we can discuss those.
We might as well go through them.
One other thought on this, this is a perspective that's actually down, you know, downward on the street. I'd like to see it a little further up on the street. In other words, you're standing on the sidewalk rather than you're down from it. Because I want to know how much of this roof I'm going to see.
So you're saying more from.
In other words, the perspective is higher, should be, the person viewing it should be, should be viewing it from a higher.
That's the height of a six foot person though.
Is it? Okay, is that, is that done off of the actual sidewalk?
Yes. That's from, that's a real photo that we had it.
Can I get a perspective from here then?
If you'd like.
I want one as well.
Okay.
Thank you. And maybe even from further up the street.
I have one from, well, I didn't change all the colors, but here, let me.
Is that the one that was in our package?
These are all the angles we have that.
Okay.
Oh, here.
These were all being moved and done so far.
Uh huh, yeah, I've seen a couple of them.
We just changed the colors on one, just to, just to get a feedback, but. One from here, one here, one here, and one here. I mean, that's pretty much every corner of the building. From where we can view it and get it in total mass.
Yeah, there you can see where the ground is a lot of brown.
Presumably that extra half story is going to have the same coloring, correct?
It's just going to be, yeah, it's going to be a stucco finish with the same.
We wanted it to disappear as much as possible.
Yeah, I understand it, okay. Thank you.
Are we completed, have we completed this portion and we can go on to?
Yeah, this is the architectural portion. This is three nineteen.
A lot of the site plan comments. I think we addressed everything from Mr. Fish's office on the site plans. The width of sidewalk reemerged at the northwest, southwest corner. We're going to confirm that. The reality of the sidewalk in totality is going to be replaced. It's never going to survive the construction. So there's some awkwardness towards the south, northwest corner with the southwest corner, yeah, where the materials change. We're going to, we'll, we'll do a detail of that and straighten that out. That was one of the main things from Dolph's. The other technical items will be a. Southwest corner. Southwest corner. I'm sorry. And then Frank DiMarco ahead.
All right, let's just go one at a time. Do we have any comments from folks here? Yes.
So we just received new site plans today, is that right? And they were dated? So I haven't, you know, our office hasn't had a chance to review the new site plan. But just looking at it now, it looks like most of the changes with regard to Terrace Place have been made. One thing I did notice is that we talked about, we discussed a kind of a, a marking, a pavement marking. Before you get to the stamped concrete, if you're coming down Terrace Place, that, you know, an arrow to kind of point you, to direct you into, to kind of funnel you back into the one lane. So that's not indicated on the site plan. And another thing, we'd just like to have the opportunity to look at is just the width of Terrace Place, just to make sure that, you know, it's wide enough to accompany, to accommodate traffic and moving in both directions. So we just want to look at that just to make sure, you know, with our traffic engineer, just to make sure that everything is.
Understood.
You know, looks good. But that pavement marking, I would, I would indicate it on the, on the plan.
Was that on your original sketch?
Yeah.
Did he miss it?
So if you see.
We got them late.
You see the arrow that says painted arrow at the start? Yep. Yep.
Was there anything else that you had to comment on?
Not with regard to Terrace Place. And I believe you mentioned the memo from, I provided the memo from Dolph Rotfeldt and also from DPW. The, one of the issues was the width of the sidewalk on the northwest corner of the site and making sure that it's ADA compliant. And from my understanding that you're going to look into that.
Yeah, we have to pull the building back a few inches to make it a one, you know, compliant with the five feet.
Okay.
Like I said, that scoring is all going to be redone. It's a little awkward there, so we'll, we'll make sense of it. So that we, we don't have an issue with the ADA requirement.
And then the other issue was with the DPW and just figuring out with them garbage pickup and making sure that that works.
Yes, and we were going to also look to you to give us some recommendations about volume.
Right, we can, we can look into that.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll make all those adjustments and get them to you for the next meeting.
Right now in your plans, how, how big is the area for the containers? I mean, because he's saying that you need two yard containers, six two yard containers. How many would fit there now if you?
From our calculation, three.
Oh.
So it's, it's shy, but we're not sure that the six is the requirement. So we're going to work with him and find out. We've discussed the compactor if necessary to reduce the volume, obviously. But there are recyclables, we understand, so we'll, we'll come up with a solution to the problem for the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Pinto, did you have any comments?
Thank you. Yes, in looking at the memo, and as Noel said, we received it just as we entered the meeting or at the end of the day today. Many of the things that you've addressed certainly have answered the questions and concerns that I've raised in my memorandum. What I'm still looking at though, and I haven't fully digested all of the comments, is that indicate that the sidewalk does not cross over the driveway. I guess that was on the second page, right. We have not shown a pedestrian alert system as per the comment because there's no sidewalk crossing the parking lot exit. Maybe it's not a formal sidewalk, maybe it's part of the ramp to the driveway, but there is a sidewalk leading up to it from Terrace Place coming down the hill. And then it does continue on with a detectable pedestrian warning, which you're required to do under, you know, handicap guidelines. So we're still going to need some sort of alert system. It can, you know, it can be a generic comment at the moment that tells the pedestrian that a vehicle is exiting in particular, entering, you're going to see the vehicle. And we've required this, when we've had this condition on almost all the projects over the last few years. So you're going to have to address that eventually, but.
Acidal warning at the, at the curb cut.
Yes, as you're, as you're, the vehicle's coming out, as, as the sidewalk enters, approaches, I should say, the exit in particular from the, from the garage. And it could be, doesn't have to be audible, it can just be a strobe, you know, minor strobe without lighting up the whole neighborhood at three o'clock in the morning. So, you know, it's just a sensor. And just an overview of the comments, generally speaking, looks like you've addressed everything that I had concerns about. But I do share the concern that Terrace Place needs to be checked as far as its overall width. It looks like it's a 20 foot road. And for a two way traffic road, that's, I'm not a traffic engineer, but that's a little narrower than I would think it might be. But again, if it, if it meets the criteria, then that's great. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. If there's anything else to. Over.
Anything else mailed out or?
Can you point out where the, do you have renderings of the, the garbage containers that DPW is now concerned about? Because I'm, can you direct me to which sheet it is?
There isn't any detail.
There isn't any detail, so.
Yeah, we just heard today that that's what he wanted. I had, I'd actually pulled up the dumpster on my phone to get the size.
Okay, so we're proposing to put it in this little, my colleague points out, a little triangular area off of Terrace Place?
Yes, it's about the size of a parking space.
He also says the elevation change will not allow for safe handling of containers.
Yeah, there's a cross slope there because of the curb cut.
Yeah. Do you have any solution for that?
We're going to, like I said, we're going to work with Frank.
Frank, oh, okay, that would be really good.
Come up with a solution. If we have to recess it into the building, we'll, we'll, we'll find a safe spot for it that everybody will be happy with.
Yeah.
We have to deal with the garbage, obviously.
Yeah.
So we only got his comment early this afternoon, so there wasn't a lot of time to.
Okay.
And also I was told the fire department was writing a memo and as was the police department. I don't know if you received them, but we were in contact with both of them.
I don't think so.
Is there any, anything else?
Anything else clear?
I can think of for now.
Do we have a motion to open public hearing? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment?
Tori Angelulo, eighty-four, eighty-six, eighty-eight, Main Street. Really happy to see the plans. I wish Terry and Jim all the luck in the world. Think you're doing all the best you can.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment? There not being anyone else, do we have a motion to close? No. Continue. Continue, I'm sorry, to continue the public hearing at our next meeting.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman, Chair President, Chair Mailer. And we will address these issues and we'll be back for your work session and meeting next month. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business that anyone has? Okay, do we? Yes.
Just one other small item. I just wanted to just remind you that I provided you with EAF for Hundred Main Street, so you can look it over. Obviously, we're not going to, you know, we, we're not adopting it today, but you have it to look at. Just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone.